It is Monday, October 17th, 2022, and the time is 5:32 PM. And I'd like to call this work session to order. First on our agenda are city updates. So Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council. And Mayor Gradisor is on Zoom this evening. I'll start with a brief COVID update. This week's one-week positivity count was 147.8, which was up just slightly from last Monday when I reported. And the one-week positivity rate is at 5.9 versus, excuse me, 5.0 versus 4.4 last week. And we do have nine days of stabilized hospitalizations at Parkview Hospital. I'll move on to the Fountain Creek update. I have only two updates this evening. And one, just to share that I just spoke with Karen Wilson to get an update on today. Everybody started this morning. Multiple city departments are involved with the Fountain Creek update. Both Health Solutions and Pasada were in attendance today without speaking to any of the individuals experiencing homelessness. So they're going to try to be there again tomorrow and into the week, thinking that maybe they could talk to more individuals to come up out of the camp and visit with them. So she, her bottom line to share with you is that they were off to a slow start today, but did good throughout the day. And that concludes the city updates for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Solano. Councillor Flores?
You know, I was thinking about, you know, the situation down in the Fountain Creek. And I'm wondering whether we have anything on the books now, and I'm looking at Dan, or that we could consider in treating those encampment areas like the state of Colorado treats their campgrounds. And there's a lot of strict rules that certainly don't go into people's constitutional rights. But there's certain things that people cannot do in the campgrounds, our national parks and our state parks. And they have a lot of rules, you know, about trash, about starting a fire, you know, about cutting wood. I mean, all of those things have already passed mustard. And the question is whether or not we can be able to put together a camping ordinance that would kind of manage a situation like we have down there.
Well, we have very strict rules regarding camp and city parks. And we have a lot of city parks. The area along the fountain, although we own some of the parcels there, is not part, is not a city park. The police periodically come through and we post warnings that we are going to clear this camp on this date. And people leave and we remove the debris and the other items that are there. But that's the, that's the extent of it, as I understand it.
Is the, is those, you say that we may not own that property. Who does then?
Well, we own, we own strips of the property. Some of the property is owned by the state. Some of it is owned by private landowners. There are rights of way that along the river, which belong to the state. Under American law, nobody owns a river, so. But that's, that's, we have not been, not been aggressive in terms of removing people and arresting people along the encampment.
The only thing I'd add is that when you go to a state park or a national park, they have a lot of signs everywhere, you know. And it just seems to me that there might be some homeless that would pay attention to those signs and that they would not consider camping in those areas. If we could find out, you know, what we own, what we don't own, at least we can control what we do own and make it impossible to do some of the things that they're doing down there.
Yeah, on a related subject, we are going to discuss two proposed ordinances to the municipal code at the end of tonight's agenda in exact session. Now.
All right, well, thanks for clarifying that. Thank you.
Councillor Tensio.
Yeah, the problem with new ordinances is those people aren't going to obey them anyway. And the advantage that the park services have is they provide services. They provide trash receptacles. They provide people that go around picking up trash, employees. They take care of the trails. They take care of that. We don't do any of that down on the river bottoms. Instead of cleaning up once a year and going down there and doing a massive program of some sort, maybe we should consider putting trash receptacles up and down the creek. Or somebody told me what you should do is send a police officer once a day at least in an ATV up and down the creek to kind of patrol the place, not necessarily control, but patrol. We don't do any of that. Everybody says it's a, it's a huge problem. But it's like a Band-Aid that we're doing. We clean up once a year and we feel good about it. And then the rest of the year, we don't do anything. They go back and they continue doing the things that they're doing. Maybe like the park service does, they, they're providing services to their, the people that use their parks. Maybe we should start providing services ourselves. There are services that can be provided down there. Not, not everybody's going to throw their trash into a trash barrel. But like you said, maybe somebody would. And we should consider that because another ordinance isn't going to do any good. Because how are we going to enforce it? We've got to, if we have a littering ordinance, got to catch them littering, I suppose. I don't know.
Councillor Graham?
I just wanted to give kudos to all the city employees that were down there today. I was down there with them and I can't even speak to, you know, what I saw these men and women doing today, cleaning of trash. And they, they hauled off several, several loads of trash, furniture, mattresses, needles, you, you name it. It's the farther away than we went, the worse it got. And it, it sucks that the city employees, you know, had to spend their day and there are four more days this week cleaning up other people's garbage. And so I just want to give a big thanks to everybody that was down there. It was, it was a sight and I encourage you, they'll be out down there till Friday. If any of you have time, they're, they're part-time. So they're just there in the morning. But the work that they are doing down there, I can't even express how difficult it is, you know, they, they can't even drive the trucks down into there because the, it's like sand. So, so they're pulling it from the river to a place where they can actually get it in a, a front loader, drive the front loader up to the, the top of the street and dump it. It's, it's very strenuous and it takes a lot of time. And, and they made, they made some, some clearings today and what they were doing. And so I, I mean, I walked it several times, but I mean, they've even diverted the river in a portion of the, of the creek. And it's, it's a monstrosity down there. It's, so I encourage, if you guys have time in the next four days to, I mean, spend 10 minutes. And I'm sure Karen would love to take you down and kind of show you what they're doing and show you what they've done and how much they've cleaned up because it is a lot.
Councillor Maestri?
Well, Mr. Kavosik, with all of the ideas about, you know, making that a place for people to live, I guess maybe we'd probably need to see the cost in order to do so. Because in order to develop that as a park for people to camp, it would have to have the infrastructure needs such as water, wastewater, trash, park rangers, and all the other developments. So as, as much as it sounds like a great idea, I think it needs to be set. What is the cost to the citizens to do so?
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm not recommending that. I mentioned, I mentioned the camp because camping is not allowed in city parks.
Yeah, yeah.
Camping is not allowed along the Harp area.
It's, it's a, it's a big health issue, not only to the environment down there if we don't have it developed as a park. So, you know, it's a great idea and everything, but there's a huge cost to do so. And huge. And so that's the one thing that probably needs to be considered before we go down that rabbit hole of making it habitable for people down there. Thank you.
Councillor Marzantio?
Yeah, I think Councillor Maestri and Councillor Tensio are completely right. I think that we do need, if we are going to make it a place for folks to be, a designated spot for folks to be able to camp, then they should have running water and bathrooms like parks and trash receptacles. And a million dollars a year can go a long way for a designated camp area for unstable housing folks.
Councillor Flores?
I have several other questions on, on the trash program, but I'm going to wait till we get to talk to Steve Meyer on, because he's got a section in the agenda. But I, I wanted to bring up the COVID numbers that you're seeing. What's happening now in Pueblo is that people are getting a mild version of COVID. And I just had a conversation with a family where the husband, the wife, and the two kids all got COVID. And they just hunkered down in their house and they quarantined themselves for five days. And, you know, it, it wasn't to the point that they needed any medical care, the hospital or anything. They just kind of weathered the storm. So I think a lot of the numbers that you're citing is fine. But there's another, there's other numbers out there of people getting this latest version of this virus that I don't think there's a way of calculating that. I mean, people are just hunkering down at home and just burying it and then getting over it.
Madam Chair? I do know within the city that there are positives from the take-home tests that had been provided by the health department. And exposures is why I have my mask on. So I confirmed today that the health department's exposure is still 10 days with your mask. And I have every vaccine that you could have, including the, the rate of the latest variant. But we have all the calls to HR from staff on a regular basis from those that were asking if you're taking a take-home test and you are positive, please call HR for the direction of what to do and protect those that you, your colleagues that you work with.
Yeah, I guess all I'm saying is that nobody's sitting down and calculating all these people that are, you know, they're just all falling through the cracks. And, and of course, if they're not, the good thing is that they're not, it's not serious that they have to go to the hospital. But, you know, I don't think there's a good way of counting all the people that are just hunkering down and tested positive because of the test kids they have. Just a comment.
And I do have another follow-up to tomorrow night's work session, the Latino Chamber of Commerce that you asked a previous Monday or Tuesday to invite. They will be here tomorrow, start to start the event at 5:30. But that the YMCA could not attend until Monday, the 24th. So they are scheduled also for the following Monday. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mayor, did you have anything?
No, we can jump right into the presentation and I'm going to start that if you like.
I'm seeing no other questions or comments for city updates. Thank you, Ms. Solano. So then our next agenda item is the $1 million ARPA Trash Program Presentation, brought to you by Mr. Meyer and Mayor.
Yeah, let me, let me start the presentation. Madam Chair and members of the council, sorry, I couldn't be with you there in person, but COVID has got me again, so I'm hunkering down a little bit. I don't really have any terribly bad symptoms, but I'm still testing positive. I don't know where I brought it back from San Diego or where it came from. But in any event, we are proposing this $1 million trash program. There's been discussion on council about setting up a cleanup program. This proposal sort of builds on what we've done in the last couple of years. Last year, we contracted with the Pueblo Rescue Mission to hire the homeless to go out and pick up trash, pay them cash. This program, and Mr. Meyer will go into the details with you about that, sort of explains that a little bit. And it also takes off on a program that we did on Fountain Creek this year using a volunteer who worked with the homeless down there. The city supplied trash bags and gloves and the volunteer went down there, distributed the trash bags and gloves. The homeless would pick them up, fill them up with their trash down there, bring them back and pile them up on a date certain. And then the Parks Department would go down and pick up that trash. That works pretty well, but we think it needs to be more formalized. So that's the purpose of this program here today. It's pretty capital intensive this first year because in order to really implement the program, we've got to buy some new equipment. You'll see that the budget that we propose out of these ARPA funds, and this is going to be funded by ARPA, would be free pickup trucks and a trailer that would be used to do that. So that's the large capital expense. But we decided that rather than try to contract with outside agencies, which we had a hard time doing this year, that we try to bring this program into the city, into the Parks Department, where we have employees and will hire employees, we think will make it much more effective and much more efficient. So with that brief introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen.
Good evening, Council. This is a presentation for the citywide community cleanup program. And I kind of put together a few slides and we kind of go through and just kind of look at some talking points. See if I'm smart enough to run this. Apparently not. To me? Oh, or is that you? That was a stammer. All right. So here's, here's a quick summary of kind of what we're looking at with the program. Again, it's using ARPA funds, America Rescue Plan Act for the neighborhood cleanup project. And that's going to be targeting the census tract areas of the city of Pueblo. Divide and employment to low-income unemployed or underemployed individuals who are impacted by the COVID pandemic. And we're looking at a pay scale ranging from 13.65 to 18.50 an hour, depending on how and what we can get for workers on that. We would develop an outreach, homeless outreach program called Hope that will look at going out to the, getting homeless involved again, paying them like what we did last year, paying them about $100 a day. They're working about seven or eight hours a day or whatever that point works out to be or where we keep them working for the day for. I'm reaching out, getting homeless involved and getting them to help kind of clean up the area, areas. Looking at about a million dollar, or the million-dollar budget, of course. Eligible expenses, it'll be incurred during the timeframe of the ARPA funds, which I think has to be expended by the end of '26. And then we'll kind of primarily focus on city-owned properties and right-of-ways. This is a qualified census tract areas you see here in yellow. Those are the, all the areas in the city that are qualified. So those will be the primary target of the program. It's kind of hard to read the map, but kind of get a gist of how the city's laid out. It's kind of the central area and then going down south along each side of Lake Minnequa. Goals, we kind of laid out a couple of goals. It's build a strong, healthy community by removing trash, garbage and debris from neighborhoods located in qualified census tract areas within the city of Pueblo. And the second goal would be to help mitigate poverty in the city, provide and work opportunities to low-income adults, give them a chance to earn wage, real wages and connect with services. I'll clean up low-income neighborhoods within the city, which will body cleaner and safer appearance of the community. Budget, primarily most of it's personnel. We'd hire one trash removal coordinator at $80,000. That's wages and benefits. And then we'd hire 20-plus part-time workers to help pick up the trash and hopefully a couple of different teams and kind of spread out through the community. That's a little over $600,000. That would also include the $100 a day program that we'd, we'd take the funds out of that to pay the Hope program. Equipment, Mayor mentioned three pickup trucks. I had four down here originally, but Mayor's correct. We're probably end up only getting three just because of the cost of what pickups are going for. And then a dump trailer, $160,000. Operational supplies, miscellaneous supplies, you know, anything from shovels, rakes, equipment, our little equipment, power equipment or trash pickers, bags, gloves, so forth. A little over $23,000 contracting with the trash removal programs and getting good dumpsters, you know, located. About $15,000 budget for that. Traffic control, $10,000 for that. Fuel, $30,000. Special services that we'd probably look at a payroll entity to come in and help us with the Hope program. They would be the ones, we'd give them the funds and then they would distribute it to the homeless for the, paying them the $100 a day. And then outreach to the homeless personnel. So communication, reaching out, getting the homeless to, to help clean up the trash is about $60,000, which is broken down on the next page. And that would include some of the marketing billboards, flyers, TV commercials, social media, radio and newspaper. That's how we'd kind of reach out and get those people involved. That's it in the short. We'll open it up for questions and start the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, for that presentation. What questions are there from council? Councillor Flores?
You know, one, one of the things I've been thinking about, and maybe it's just cost prohibitive. But when you take the Fountain Creek as an example, it appears to me that the reason that, that I see that makes the Fountain Creek kind of cozy for the homeless is that you can't really see them sometimes unless you're right up there. And that's because of the overgrowth of brush and the fact that we do not shave the trees so that they're open. And it appears to me that if I'm a homeless person and all the trees are, all you can see is the trunk to eight foot, they're not going to, they're not going to camp there because they don't want people seeing them. And, and I don't, you know, to me, I think of the time when we have a snowstorm and all the trees, branches are everywhere, that we've, we've owned a wood chipper that could, that could be part of the, the solution here. But the other thing is that by clearing the underbrush, which a lot of cities are doing, not because of the homeless, but because there's a potential of fire. Once a fire gets cooking with all that underbrush, that it becomes unmanageable. But I'm not an expert in that and it could be so expensive that I'm.
It's funny you, you bring that up because we just happen to be getting a grant, working with the fire department. I can't remember the, who would be coming and actually doing the, the Swift team. So with who? So we have a team of people coming in. This will probably be later in the winter, but we're looking at doing cleanup along the rivers and those high-dense tree areas, heavily vegetated areas, which are primarily made up of tamarooks and Russian ollies, which are invasive species in the state of Colorado anyway. And so part of the, the solution is to get rid of all that thick dense wood that I think you do see hiding the homeless a lot. And so we're going to be looking at cleaning up a lot of that understory and those trees, leaving the cottonwoods, which are big shade trees. And so you see that under, you'll kind of open up that understory under there. And I think you'll see a big difference in that. We've done some of that along the east side of the Fountain Creek where we can with our own crews. And it's, it really does help, but it's a continuing problem. And then you've got to stay on top of it. But we are going to start hitting that whole east side of the river all the way up and down Fountain Creek. And then some couple of areas on the Arkansas River too, that have some thick dense brush kind of situations. So that, I agree, that's a good way to help kind of open those areas up, get more eyes into the area where those folks feel a little like they don't want to be in that area and help. Control some of that.
I'm glad you're thinking about that. My, my last question, it has to do with the responsibility of the Colorado Department of Transportation on the freeway. I know that there's been some discussions between our city and CDOT as to who's responsible for cleaning the right-of-ways, the medians. And it just seems like it's an ongoing problem. The first thing I think about is that if you start trying to clean up all the trash along the, the barriers, the city doesn't have that kind of equipment or barriers that could, that we could safely do it.
Right, safely.
But has there been any progress with CDOT about their responsibility in keeping those areas clean?
Councillor, I think Andrew Hayes has been working with CDOT on behalf of the city to try to get those right-of-way agreements negotiated. I don't think we've reached an agreement yet. This has been an ongoing dispute that we've had for quite some time. CDOT and the city have different positions about whose responsibility it is to maintain that. Our position is that the federal government sets forth CDOT's responsibilities and it includes federal highways, that they have the responsibility to maintain the highway and the right-of-ways, which includes landscaping and those kind of things. CDOT looks at a particular state statute and says they're only responsible for the asphalt maintenance between the curbs. So there's a little bit of a dispute there. They claim that the statute's ambiguous. We at one time had drafted some legislation. We didn't ask it to be introduced because we thought it would get CDOT's attention that would clear up the ambiguity and make it clear that it's CDOT's responsibility under the Federal Highway Transportation Act. It's their responsibility to do that. Now, they can reach agreements with municipalities with respect to how that maintenance is going to happen. But except for a few areas, we don't have agreements with CDOT. But they've sort of, and everybody's noticed that they've just sort of abdicated and abandoned their responsibility in, in some regards. So we continue to work with them, but we don't have an agreement yet.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councillor Maestri and then Councillor Tensio?
So there's a good point right there that we just spoke about, our relationship and who's coordinating with CDOT. Because we also have the railroad. The railroad has property off their tracks that's also full of trash. And, you know, I've seen Parks and Rec be involved. I've seen community service out there be involved. I've seen code enforcement out there. I've seen the health department out there. And I talked, get out of my car and I talked to them quite a bit. And no one's, seems like no one's communicating with each other. So the other thing is this qualified census tract. And the reason we're doing this, Mr. Kavosik, is so that we can qualify for ARPA funds in order to, to use ARPA funds for this program. Is that why we're only working within the qualified census tract? Because this doesn't cover 29th Street. And it doesn't cover a lot of the high-traffic areas with a lot of trash, needles, drug addicts. And so that's why I just want a clarification there.
That's a, that's a great question. There are two pots of ARPA money under the state and local government fund. One is called Revenue Replacement Governor, Government Services. And we only got $10 million in that pot. The other pot is what I call Basic ARPA. And that is $26 million. So if we were using money from the first pot, Government Services, we, we, we could spend it along areas not included in a qualified census tract. Because we're using basic ARPA funds, we have to, we're limited by what the rules say. And the rules say, yeah, you can do it, but only in qualified census tracts. we're limited by what the rules say, and the rules say, yeah, you can do it, but only in qualified census tracts. And so I, I put that limitation in the resolution. And then I also put in the requirement that we hire low income people, homeless people who have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic.
In order to.
Great question, but our hands are tied i- if we're gonna take this money out of the 26 million.
Okay, because what I see here, um, on the qualified census tract, that it leaves a lot of the east side out. It leaves a lot of, um, I mean, really, the west side is, seems like it's pretty much covered. And then parts of, um, parts of um, the south side there, um, like Lake Ben aqua area, maybe a little bit. What I'm concerned about is that we're gonna go and we're gonna take money. And that's not what the proposal was from. Counselor Winter, she's not here tonight. It was not to take care of neighborhoods and clean up neighborhoods necessarily. I think as homeowners, as citizens of this community, we should always take care of, you know, within our property lines, all the way out to our obligations to the street and the alley. That's how we keep neighborhoods clean. The proposal was, is that we have a lot of um, city properties that are in disrepair, such as behind 29th Street, a lot of the ravines in the neighborhoods where we have um, um, retention ponds and so forth. Um, the corridor on Highway 50, Elizabeth, that's, and, and I know those are my neighborhoods, but there's also other public spaces in all of our neighborhoods that belong to us, the public that need to be taken care of. And that's not concentrated in this. The other thing is, is that, you know, Colorado Springs came up with a 2.7 million dollar cleanup. They're a larger city. And um, my issue with hiring the homeless to do this, okay, is are we gonna pay them cash? You said that we paid them cash last time. Is that the plan this time, Mr. Meyer?
That is the plan.
Okay. Workman's comp. If one of those people are injured during the process, what is the liability on the city if we're paying them cash and we don't have workman's comp?
Counselor, our plan is to work with an employment service and have them actually be paid for. They wouldn't be employees of the city. Um, those homeless people would actually come through an employment agency. They would be the ones responsible for distributing the payments to the homeless. They'd be the ones responsible for workman's comp or anything like that.
So when we're paying out um, the 13 to $18 an hour, part of that is probably going to cover the service of the agency. So they're not really gonna be clearing that amount of money. They're gonna be clearing away. Is that, does that include your service, the 13 to $18?
13 and $18, those would be part-time employees for the city of Pueblo. So those would include those benefits, those wage.
Okay, so we have 20 part-time employees?
20 plus, however many it takes to get the job done.
Okay, so, and they're not homeless then?
Then the part of that, um, besides that 20, there'll be another portion of people that'll be reaching out to the homeless and using the, using the homeless to help. So there'll be two different groups, the 20 long time.
Can I ask you, how do you train them to work in hazardous conditions? Like i- if they're just a on-call uh, person, day labor, because that's what it works, turns out to be is day labor. How do you train them to work in, with hazardous waste? And i- if you have day in and out labor, they all have, this is, this isn't, um, you know, we're dealing with needles, we're dealing with adult diapers, child diapers, um.
Right, we'll have staff on board that'll be there with the homeless, but they'll also be, the homeless will be, you know, instructed, you know, be trained, you know, a briefing before each day that they'll, we'll take them out. And they'll be briefed on how to, what, how, what and to pick up. Um, our paid staff will be probably more in charge of the needle kind of stuff. There's needle situations or more hazardous waste kind of stuff. Uh, we'll take care of that through the staff side of it, but you know, training the homeless and, you know, it's just gathering, you know, giving them, you know, a quick instructional uh, what to do and how to go about doing it. And it's, it was picking up trash and.
Well, you know, I, I was just thinking, um, you know, when we do have these drug houses, okay, where they're cooking meth.
Right, right.
And, and they're doing drugs. I mean, it, it takes a trained abatement team to go into those houses. Uh, we get campsites, they're out there, they're cooking meth, they're using drugs and so forth. Do it, what kind of training is your staff qualified to, how to train these people who are gonna be picking up the trash and so forth? Because I, I'm concerned about the liability being bigger.
Sure.
A bigger issue.
Our, our, our paid staff will be working, you know, under the coordinator who will then be communicating with code enforcement, the police department, they'll be reaching out. Or, I mean, any kind of hazardous or difficult situation they come across, you know, they can, they can not go in there, call uh, the police or fire, whomever they feel is appropriate, and then they can come in and help assess the situation.
And so you have a coordinator um, hired. Is your coordinator gonna lead the, I mean, not hired, but you're planning on hiring? Is your coord- uh, is your coordinator leading the charge on this?
They will be the one out there, yes.
And, and what is their training in the, in this situation?
That'll be part of the job uh, description will be to, that they have that experience of organizing and picking up, you know, community trash and, and getting the, the job done.
Yeah, I, I'm, you know, because it's, it's a deal in community trash. Community trash to me is like going to one of the public trash cans and, you know, packaging it up and putting it in the, in the.
We have all sorts of, sorts of training tapes and tools that go along with kind of safe cleanups and that kind of stuff. And they'll be reviewing that. They'll be, you know, exposed to all that kind of opportunities.
And then also, who's gonna be driving the um, city vehicles? Because you're, you're having four here, but are you gonna, you, you have part-time employees. Are they gonna be qualified? Are the homeless gonna be qualified to use the?
They won't, they won't drive our vehicles, but the part-time people can, as long as they got a, you know, a driver's license. And the, the coordinator will be in, in charge of, you know, driving the heavy equipment or the trailer,
Mm-hmm.
trailers and stuff. And, and we always have park staff to fall back on too, if they need something big needs to be done or taken care of. Um, you know, I.
All of your uh, heavy equipment operators will have some sort of operating license to operate heavy equipment?
They do. We have an equipment operator for that has the technical skills and the certifications to take care of big equipment.
So we go back to, um, you know, cleaning up the neighborhoods. And like I said, that's not what um, Counselor Winter and I thought about when we.
It's not so much the neighborhoods, but it's more the property, the public property in those neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm.
And the right of ways.
So um, let me ask you, I know of, offhand of three undeveloped parks in our community that did not receive any mowing this season. There's been no trash pickup. And so how do I trust that your department is going to move forward and manage this correctly? When I see three public parks that have been undeveloped, one on Eagle Ridge, the big open space, the big hill, and then over in um, the junction, we have that piece that comes off the bluff there um, down by um, Union Street, like if I was going up Union Street, it'd be to the right there.
Um. What's that?
It's all weeds, right next to Jean Latka's house, the Latka House.
That, that drainage way, that's a stormwater drainage, not a park.
Oh, so that would come from Public Works, which should be maintaining that.
It's just a stormwater right away, or easement to their, her property that.
Well, belongs to the city.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Right, but Eagle Ridge is a designated park, is just, has not been funded to be developed yet.
Mm-hmm. But still, we should maintain it, don't you think?
Well, it's, it's native vegetation out there for the most part, and so we do take care of it.
Well, there is, I mean, I've seen the weeds waste high all summer and I've seen plenty of trash on it.
I mean, we do hit the weeds twice a year. Now, whether there, people are talking about weeds or native vegetation, I think it's usually a misconception.
Yeah, I know, it just sits between all of that development. It has development surrounding it, housing. And you know, like I said before, what we've seen up in Boulder happen, with just, you know, the wrong situation. Um.
Well, I, hold on, Counselor Maestri, I know that there's other questions. Can we loop back to you?
Sure.
Okay, Counselor Graham?
Yeah, my, my only thought was, um, would this money be better spent going into like existing programs already, like code enforcement and getting some of their people up to full-time? Because I know today, you know, they had to cut out early because most of her workers are, are part-time and it seems like, you know, they do maybe three days a week part-time. Would this money be better used? It, it seems like Ms. Wilson has the experience to kind of do all this already. And so for us to bring that first on, that silly or is that just?
Uh, you know, it's tough for me to answer for code enforcement for sure, but um, um, I think we both do about the same. I know through the parks department, we do a lot of cleanups. And uh, you know, along the trail system and on, on other areas, like was mentioned earlier. And so, um, you know, we have.
Those, are those, would those people be interested in, you know, being moved up to a full-time employee instead of us hiring 20 part-timers? Or is that just?
Well, I think, I think so. I think anytime you can hire full-time people opposed to part-time people, I think you get more bang for your buck that way.
You know, like today, what I witnessed, everybody doing a great job, kind of already doing these things that are outlined in the, the budget. So I would just wonder if it would be used that way.
Mr. Kavosik?
That is uh, probably a good idea, but it would not qualify for basic ARPA funding.
We still have about $3 million left in the other.
And I don't know.
Lana, do you know?
Um, Madam Chair, I do have the balances of the ARPA funds right here in front of me. Uh, the, what, what Dan refers to, what the city attorney, uh, city attorney refers to as basic ARPA, um, not counting um, the approvals that City Council made last week. Uh, the balance is 13,112,000. Um, there are some pending requests still to come from that. And the balance, um, as of September 30th, of, for uh, the, out of the $10 million of um, lost revenue and um, community services or governmental services, the balance is a 1.8 million 65,000. So 100, 1,865,000. So those are the most recent balances that the accounting office has. I also have some information on which I, I'm, I'm thinking Council's probably going to ask for in the coming days. And that is the uh, uh, the current positions that would be, that uh, the mayor has recommended um, in the 2023 budget, of which a couple of those uh, directly address code enforcement. Uh, the chief is also um, on Zoom tonight, uh, Chief Miller. So you might want to get back, back, back to that when you talk about the budget. Um, but there are positions there. And then also the differences between who cleans what in the city. Um, the, by designation, um, Parks cleans all of the uh, public uh, public property. Um, and um, our Public Works, the rights of way, and our code enforcement private property. So they just came together to do the Fountain Creek cleanup. But generally, that is the areas that they are responsible for, for uh, but that's their territory of cleaning.
Counselor Graham, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Um, Counselor Flores?
Yeah, it, it just seems like we're, we're really complicating things here uh, a lot. And that is that number one, uh, it's clear that the homeless people that you're going to hire are gonna be independent contractors. They're gonna be the responsibility of a personnel uh, company. So we would have no legal liability there. And some formal contract will be in place, holding the city harmless, uh, you know, whoever the personnel company is. So that's, that's a program all to itself. As far as the employees, these people that you would be hiring, uh, the additional part-time people you'll be hiring, they're not gonna be expected to do any more than what some of our employees do right now. And if they're covered, they would be covered under workers' compensation, which eliminates them from being able to sue us. Anyway, their only remedy is the work comp policy, and we'll have that in place for them. The other thing is that Pinnacle, who writes the workers' comp, uh, you know, for the city, they will make sure that they have the proper equipment. So when it comes to needles, there's special gloves that you use. Uh, there's special boots that they'll be required to have. So they'll get the same safety equipment and same safety training as our current employees. And it's not like, uh, you know, I mean, there, there are special programs, there are special uh, online safety issues. I think your people probably meet weekly on safety meetings, probably on a Monday morning, uh, as I recollect.
We specifically have a needle uh, cut policy, so.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that, that we, you know, we don't create a problem with these people. They're gonna be well taken care of. They're gonna be well-trained, they'll have the right equipment, and that there's two different sets of employees here. Uh, and, and the um, the other thing is that a million dollars for this program, it seems like a lot of money. But I, I think this is really the beginning of something. And for us to be trying to solve, you know, the Pueblo trash issue, this amount is really, you know, is really a start. And it's not going to solve the entire, I mean, we're talking about a, a city that's of 120,000 people. And there's just a lot of other needs that we need too. Uh, so I, I just want to make sure that we don't get off track here. Uh, and that we, you know, we, we look at what we can do here. I, I think there's, there's also a culture and educational issue that needs to be taken care of. We, we have a lot of, a lot of residential, single-family dwelling homeowners that really don't care sometimes. We have businesses of which I don't go into. If I see a trashy front, uh, and it's, it, it could be a restaurant, and, and I'm thinking, what does a kitchen look like then? And, and, and there are businesses here in Pueblo that will not go out and clean the curb because it's a city's problem. And they don't see how it looks, that picture looks. Uh, I lived in Europe for two years, and it's the classic scene. Every time they open up a little business, there's somebody out there sweeping the wall, cleaning everything, the gutters, the whole nine yards. We don't see that kind of culture here. And, and I'm, I'm, I'd like to go on record that everybody needs to take part in this, including our businesses. Some of the trashiest places are like parking lots of, uh, the big, I mean, you know, Fortune 500 companies like Walmart and Target, uh, and they have to do a better job of cleaning. I understand that they give up on their carts, and once a cart is taken by a homeless person, they don't want any more responsibility. I wish we could make them pick up their carts, but you know, that, that would entail another issue we don't want to get into, but.
Be another day discussion.
Yeah. Anyway, uh, there's no question there. I just had the.
Sound off.
Counselor Tencio? Sorry, Mayor. Do you want to, do you have a retort?
Well, I just think that Counselor Flores has sort of hit the nail on the head. And part of this program, there's some, some marketing money included that will be marketing directed at the community to sort of, uh, as he says, educate people. But hey, this is everybody's responsibility. Nobody thinks that this is gonna be the end-all and be-all to us having a clean city, but it's a place to start, I think. Um, but part, part of it has to be getting the message out that this is everybody's responsibility. This will allow us to do some things we can't do now, like somebody calls because there's a couch in an alley or something like that. We can, you know, pay some attention to that, which we simply don't have the people to do right now. And this will not supplement code enforcement. I think uh, Laura did a great job of explaining that they deal mostly with private property. And this will deal with those rights away and public property areas that we get complaints about, as I'm sure you do. Um, that'll, we hope start to make a difference. Um, it won't be the be-all and end-all. And obviously, this is ARPA funds, so it's not coming out of the budget. Um, we'll, we'll have to see how this works and whether it'll sustain itself, whether it's worth the bang for the buck. But I thought it was worth a try to make a dent in the trash problem in our community. And I think that, uh, although we, we've got census tracts listed there, you know, part of it is we're gonna hire people from those census tracts. And I think we hire people from those census tracts that can perhaps work outside of those census tracts, that to some extent. So primarily, the focus will be census tract oriented. But if we're bringing people from, from those census tracts and hiring them there, they could probably be used anywhere. But if we're bringing people from, from those census tracts and hiring them there, they could probably be used anywhere.
Counselor Tencio.
Yeah, uh, a million dollars isn't going to go very far. Is this for twenty three and twenty four to be expended by twenty six?
It could be, it could go over one year, two year. It depends on, you know, until the money runs out.
Okay. Uh, my question is, what are we going to do afterwards? I think the mayor kind of answered it a little bit. Um, in that, uh, after we expend this money, we're probably going to have to get it from the general fund to continue the program if we do. I'm in favor of it because we'll be doing alleys and, uh, right of ways and, uh, uh.
It would be a big help.
Uh, public property, a, a lot of areas where a, a lot of the constituents believe it's our responsibility anyway. A lot of people in, in that census tract believe, wait a minute, it's not my alley. It's your alley. Why aren't you taking care of it? And I try to tell them, well, half of the alley is yours, but they don't like that idea. They don't. Then they, a lot of people aren't taking responsibility. So I think I'm fully in support of this program. I just wonder what we're going to do after the million dollar runs out. And another thing, uh, and I was talking to this with a couple of the counselors in the break room. I fill my trash barrel and I put it out every Monday night so that it gets picked up on Tuesday. And next Monday I'm putting that out again. You think here, we're going to clean up as much as we can with the million dollars. When that's done. It's going to get dirty again. What are we going to do about it? Let me propose that along with cleaning up the city, and I brought this up in the break room. Let's do a million dollars to beautify the city. I don't see the anything in the budget where any kind of beautification. And that's one of the things that people outside the city and inside the city are always complaining about, gee, you got an ugly city. Well, we do, and we're not doing very well with the things that we do have. By the way, the bump outs downtown, they're in horrible shape on a scale of one to ten, or two.
Running over them.
Well, they're not running over the plants that aren't being taken care of. The, the curb is being run over. But the point is that we can do a much better job and we should be putting a lot more money into beautification of the city. Uh. Uh, the, um, what's the lawyers down on Union? What's her name? Concilius. They do a heck of a job on B Street. Let's do it the rest of this, uh, on Union Street. Let's do it up Main Street. Let's do Northern, let Forest. Well, nobody goes over the bridge on Port Street except the people on the east side. So it doesn't matter. Nobody's going to see it. But anyway, the point is that, uh, we could do much, much better spending money. Let's put a million dollars into beautifying the city, you know, because I'm in favor of this, but, uh, we're not doing anything to beautify the city. Let's put a million dollars into the beautifying. I want to see that in the budget.
Sounds good.
We have the support of Mr. Meyer.
Yeah, before we would get into beautifying the city, there's a big portion of the city that still isn't covered under your program.
Right.
And that is coming from a lot of the constituents and those areas are the ones that are screaming at us the loudest right now. So we really need to come up with a plan and where that money's coming from, because see this, this plan here is, it, it's not going to sustain itself. Once the ARPA funds are gone, we can't go back to ARPA because the opportunity is gone. So, um, we're. If it doesn't meet the qualifications for ARPA, the rest of the city, we need to find those funds very quickly. Um, uh, because I'm tired of my phone ringing off the hook over it, you know? I mean, rightfully so. It's their money. I'm getting a lot of calls just about this. Trash cleanup here, um, concerned about the part time employees. The reason, um, because. Are we going to have a problem with like, once this, say, we don't recover funds, we're going, it looks like we may be headed for a recession. Looks like a lot of things may be happening and we don't have funds for this program to sustain this program. These part time employees are all going to have to be laid off. Are they going to be entitled? I'm not talking about the contracted ones. I'm talking about the part time ones. Are they all going to be entitled to unemployment? Is this why we're not hiring full time employees? Why wouldn't we hire full time employees and make this more of a productive day? The setup and the takedown on a six hour day isn't, is counterproductive to the end goal. I mean, it should, a- a- as it is, it should be an eight hour day in order for it to be more productive. Because you say you're going to hire these people as needed. We got a lot out there. This is going to be pretty, this should be full steam ahead.
Agreed.
And then we have to maintain after that. So, I mean, there's got to be a long term thought as to where this money's coming from. We're not just going to put it through this next year because it's a, you know, election year. We need to sustain this program and keep the city clean. And so I'd like to see some other ideas come across the table and where the money is going to come from for the rest of the city before we, you know. Of course, I'd like to see beautification, but we have to clean it up first.
Yes. So I guess a couple of questions that I heard in there was, is the part time, um, folks, whether we, they would be, um, susceptible to unemployment. I assume they would, depending on, um, when they're let go at the end of the program. They've, they can only work thirteen hundred hours of, a year, uh, up to thirteen hundred hours a year anyway. And so that's why you would have to kind of double up. So part of them were first part and part of them were second part. Or, you know, mix them with lesser hours. So it's more like a twenty hour week or whatever. I haven't quite figured out what that combination is going to look like yet. But that's kind of the goal was to get them going and we can get them going sooner than full time employees. And so the program, um, could start quicker, so to speak. So. Um, full time employees may be tougher to, uh, find, um, but it'd be also tougher to let go. You know, with the full time employees. So that's, you're right. We need to find a way to sustain it and keep it going after the, the funds run out. Or to go outside that QTC area. We need to find those funds.
Yeah, because Colorado Springs seems to have a pretty good plan. Did you guys look at other cities?
Not looked at.
When you, when you came up with your plan, have you looked at what some of the other cities have done?
Not had that time to research.
Okay. Um, do you not think that you would be better having, uh, rather than a trash coordinator, but a project manager? That also deals with C dot, that also deals with the, um, railroad, that also, you know, deals with the different entities. Um, because it seems like, you know, Mr. Hayes is busy. You didn't, you know, you didn't have time to maybe research other cities. But don't you think a more management role would be more productive or, uh?
I think the coordination of those, with those entities, I think, I don't know if you have to be a project manager to do that.
Well, usually you have the authority to do so. When you're, when you're calling, when you call another entity and you have a position with who you're representing. It does, it is a little bit more effective than the phone call.
I think, uh, through a coordinator, I think they could make those, and they make those working relationships that are effective. And I think they can reach out and work with those folks just fine. And if, and, uh, I mean, I can always step in and, you know, work with the. People further up the chain if need be, but most of the work gets done at the, that level. And those coordination efforts, I think can be done at that level.
Who did the cleanup over underneath, uh, Colorado forty seven, the bypasses there at the mall? Did you all do the cleanup or did the?
Today?
Uh, no, last week.
That was done through public works, I believe. We did not.
Yeah, it was, I was, are they finished? Are, are you guys finished over there, Mr. Hayes?
Good evening. So we are still in progress. We're actually assisting code enforcement this week with the work that's going on along Fountain Creek. But we started last week on the, I believe it was the twelfth and thirteenth, right under Mel Harmon Bridge in Colorado State Highway forty seven. Uh, group from code enforcement, C dot, public works, stormwater, uh, all of us were out there last week as well.
That's about twenty ninth or thirtieth street, right there by the mall?
Uh, just north of the mall.
Okay. Yeah. So you guys are just, are you still working on that?
So we've, we've gotten most of that taken care of right there at that location. There are several areas over there that we had posted for cleanups. So there's more to come. Right now, we're just making sure that code enforcement has the support they need to get down Fountain Creek.
The reason it for Mr., uh, Mr. Hayes is, you know, I, I've been watching that go on for a few days now. And I've noticed rather than picking up the trash and then taking down the vegetation, they just took down the vegetation and all the trash is popping up through the dirt. Out there.
So we have, we have, we did some vegetation cleanup after we picked up the trash.
Oh, well, I'd like for whoever is in charge of that to go over there before they sign off and take a look at it.
Okay.
There's also that, that train bridge and underneath that it's just full of trash, it's full of trash.
So I, I do want to point out, we are a, a sword, not a scalpel either, right? And we are not picking up every gum wrapper. We are out there picking up camps, tents, pallets, furniture, gigantic stuff that nobody can get. So we had a crew of about forty people, uh, a fleet of vehicles out there. And it took all of those resources, three days to get that little teeny area cleaned up.
Correct. But I, I would like to say that I can understand if there's a few things left behind, but it's like a minefield out there with the trash popping through the door.
Right. And some of that, some of that debris is in a pond or, you know, waterway, and we're trying to clean that out. But we aren't going swimming to go get it. So we've got nets, we've got poles, we've been pulling things in, using backhoes, uh, using everything at our disposal to get that.
And, and maybe you're not finished yet.
Yeah, well, as things continue to flow down, we'll be back through there.
So my stream, maybe you could go down there and pick up some of the trash. Works offers, you know, pickers and.
You know, we pay people in this community to work.
We do. We can sit up here and complain about it. We.
I'm not complaining.
Works, but that's not our job. They're doing the best that they can. If you have a problem with it, go down there and clean it up.
Well, Counselor Graham, I'm not looking for votes and so I'm not here. We spend money, the taxpayers' money, and either we're going to spend it right or we're not going to spend it. If you're okay with that, that's your business. It's not my, I'm not okay with it. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah. Madam Chairman, I guess in summary, uh, what we'd ask is we'd like to put this on the agenda for the council's approval. We've got, uh, some items there in terms of, uh, you know, that position, creating that position for that coordinator and the salary scale there. As indicated, this isn't the perfect solution, but I think it's a start. And as we get into it, if it turns out we need to bring more full time people on rather than part time people to make the program more efficient, we can do that. Um, the advantage of part time people is we can get that started right away. Because we don't have to go through that civil service process. The Parks Department has a process of bringing part time people on. They have part time people that work for them, uh, year round in the Parks Department. So I guess we'd like to get a consensus from the council to put this on the ballot or to put it on the agenda and, and move it forward at your next meeting.
Uh, yes, Mayor, and I, I believe we didn't pull it exactly from the agenda. It should be on second reading at the next regular meeting. Is that correct, Ms. Lano?
Uh, Madam Chair, it was a resolution. And so it was asked to be pulled from the agenda. So we'd have to place it back on as a resolution, uh, for, on the twenty fourth, next Monday. And we need to have that, um, that consensus direction to staff ASAP so that we can meet the deadlines for issuing the pro formal agenda out of the city clerk's office.
Well, I am in full support of having this back as a resolution and all of the other qualifying ordinances or whatever the pay scales need, whatever needs to happen. I'm in full support. Counselor Tencio.
I already gave my support, yeah.
Counselor Graham. Counselor Mura Maeshi.
We expected it to be on the agenda.
Counselor Flores.
Yes.
And, and Counselor Martinez, or take it, just give a thumbs up. So I think that there's the direction. We'll see it on the agenda for the next regular meeting next Monday. Stephen, what color t-shirts are people going to wear when they're cleaning up trash?
I haven't got to that detail, but I'll keep you in mind.
Well, they should be bright green because our team up to clean up shirts are bright green. So.
Sounds perfect.
So ordered. Thanks, Stephen. Um, our next then, rolling right along, our agenda item are, is the budget work session, uh, capital improvements, uh, presentation. I will, um, remind fellow counselors that the improvement plan's in front of us. So, uh, Ms. Lano and Mayor, please take it away.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. Uh, yeah, we're going to first talk about the capital improvement plan. And I know there's a, a PowerPoint there, but I want to let you know that in the proposed annual budget you got, you'll see the capital improvement plan. Uh, pages, uh, I, uh, one through ten of the budget book. Um, and it's important, there's two different categories there. I through seven are funded capital improvements. I've, uh, eight through ten are unfunded capital improvements. So that will be important to keep in mind as, as, as we go through this. Yeah, you can put the next, there you go. The next slide is, uh, so this is the introduction to this, uh, process. We're required to have a five year capital improvement plan. That's why it's included in your budget book by Article seven, section seven sixteen of the city charter. We're able, I think, this year to use some of those excess taper funds to make long delayed capital investments. And as we go through this, you'll see what we're, what we're talking about there. Uh, one of the things I want to point out to you is that the new firehouses that we've been talking about are not in pages I. One through ten of the budget, or they're not in pages I, one through seven, because they're not funded. Our plan is to fund those, um, new firehouses by issuing debt. That debt has not yet been issued. So that's why you'll, you'll see that they're in the unfunded part of the capital improvement budget. But I want to make sure and point that out to you because we intend, uh, we hope to start on those, uh, next year, but we have not yet issued the debt. You'll recall that our plan is to, um, sort of roll the debt over that we're using on the municipal justice center. And use that money to, uh, build these, uh, new firehouses. So of the capital improvement projects, we're going to use twenty two. Million one hundred and eighty three thousand, four hundred and sixty one dollars to make these capital improvements in twenty twenty three. And that's of the forty nine million in capital improvements total. So if you go to the next. Uh, slide. So this is a capital improvement plan, twenty twenty three by fund. So out of the general fund, you'll see that twenty two million dollars is going to be spent. Now with the enterprise funds. Nineteen million dollars. And that's mostly from, uh, wastewater and stormwater. From the highway users' tax funds, there will be three point two million dollars spent for capital improvements. From the, uh, public safety, the police, public safety tax, two point seven billion dollars in capital improvements. From the conservation trust funds, uh, those are grants that we received, nine hundred and seventy five thousand. From the economic development tax fund, there'll be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital improvements, uh, spent. And in the E nine one one fund, four hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. So the total of those capital investments there is forty nine million dollars. And the graph on the right just sort of shows you that, um, you know, the lion's share is coming from the general fund and from the enterprise funds. The, the next slide. Shows you the capital improvements by type. Where they're going to go, yeah, how they're categorized. So you'll see the buildings, uh, will be seventeen percent of that. And it just goes on down the page to, uh, my item there. And I'm just going to let you go through this and you can stop me and ask me any questions at any time you want to. But you see there's stormwater, two point, uh, two million dollars basically in capital improvements. Transportation, which includes, um, the street repair funds, sixteen million dollars. Wastewater is a big one, uh, and we'll get into the detail of that as we move through this is eight million dollars in capital expenditures. So that again totals of forty nine million. It just shows you what areas those are going to go into. So the next slide gives you a list of the. General fund capital improvement projects that we're going to fund in twenty twenty three. You know, the first one is a roof on the, um, the, the history museum, I think down at Victoria and B, uh, B Street. Uh, that's a building that's owned by the city, um, that heritage mu- museum facility. You'll see that, uh, big capital improvements, we're going to, we're starting to plan now for these new fire stations. We're going to purchase one fire pumper and two ladder trucks for a total of three point six million dollars. Yeah, we're proposing in this budget. IT technology upgrades, that's always a big item, a million dollars in new, um, IT technology. That, uh, has been requested and that we're budgeting for. Road and street repairs, you'll see out of the general fund, we're going to spend seven point five million dollars for, uh, street repairs. We've got in this capital improvement budget, the street revitalization for. We've got in this capital improvement budget, the, uh, street revitalization for Union and Main. You recall, our share of that is four-point-five million dollars. We're getting, Andrew's in the room, he can correct me if I'm wrong, at least two million dollars from Seadot and at least two million dollars, I think, from Pueblo County to complete that. Those, uh, both of those projects, Union and Main, they've sort of been combined at this point. But they're in the construction design phase a- at this point. We expect that, uh, construction will begin, uh, on those next year. So that shows you all of the capital improvements we're gonna fund out of the general fund. And it totals at twenty-two million one hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars that we talked about, uh, previously. The next slide is simply a graph that shows you, you know, those categories in a graphic form, of where the general fund capital improvements are going. Uh, the note there on the box is that, uh, transportation includes a seven-point-five million dollars for, for street repairs that are coming out of the general fund. And in addition to that, you'll see, um, as we get into the later slides, that two-point-five million dollars is coming out of Highway User Tax Fund. So that will again fund street repairs, uh, to the tune of about ten million dollars or a little more this year. So, um, the next slide is, um, the enterprise capital improvement funds. And that's by project types again, um, the building's five million dollars. Uh, and we'll go through that as, as we get to the wastewater, I'm sure. The operational's two-point-five. Parks is five-hundred-and-eleven thousand, stormwater's two million, wastewater's eight-point-eight million. And again, that, the graph to the right just shows you that, um, graphically of, uh, where, where those funds are gonna be spent at. So the next page is the enterprise capital improvement funds. These are the top five projects listed there. Uh, and the first one there you'll see is a three-point-two million dollar for a wastewater, uh, digester mixer replacement. We're still looking at that. There's some questions that have to be answered about whether that can be done in twenty-twenty-three or it might be kicked over till twenty-twenty-four. We hope to have those answers, um, in the next few weeks. And there might be a change in that in the budget book is whether this uh, particular item is gonna be in twenty-twenty-three or we have to push it off until twenty-twenty-four. But there'll be some additional information that, uh, uh, will be made available to you as we move through that process. Uh, sanitary sewer, this is the annual large main rehabilitation, three million dollars. Um, we try to spend that amount every year just doing planned rehabilitation for lines that we believe are gonna fail and try to replace them on a regular basis before they fail, so they don't do damage or it's not an emergency situation. We obviously always have emergency breaks and I'm forever authorizing emergency repairs when we, uh, don't get, uh, lines repaired. But, uh, but right below that for two million dollars is the annual small main rehabilitation. So you'll see that our plan is to spend five million dollars proactively replacing sewer mains that, uh, we believe are gonna fail. Uh, these are the oldest or the most susceptible to failure, we believe. And we want to try to get on top of them before they do fail so that we can prevent, as I say, the damage and, uh, try not to make those emergencies. Waste water polymer system upgrade for a one-point-six million dollars and sanitary sewer capacity improvements for one-point-one million dollars. So, um, i- in total, at the wastewater plant, it looks like eleven million dollars, um, on this list. Those are the top five, but the total funding for wastewater and capital improvements, and that's set forth in, in the budget book, is nineteen million dollars. Recall that, uh, our wastewater, wastewater treatment plant is an enterprise, so it's not using general fund money. These funds are from fees that are collected by, um, wastewater treatment, the sewer users' fee, basically. And that's what funds the sewer system, um, and the capital improvements to the sewer system. The next slide is the H U T F, uh, capital improvements a- and faster capital improvement funds. Uh, you'll see there that, um, at East Eight Street Bridge Repair over Dry Creek, hundred thousand dollars, a Dylan flyover. Debt is a payment we're making apparently a hundred ninety-nine thousand, uh, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in projects to be determined. And there is a street rehabilitation, um, number from the Highway User Tax Fund for, uh, two-point-five million dollars that we'll put with the seven-point-five million in general fund to make those ten million dollars in street repairs. So the total funding out of the Highway User Tax Fund for capital improvements will be, uh, three-point-two million dollars. This next slide you've seen before. This is, uh, a schedule for road repair and maintenance of streets that we plan to replace and, um, not replace, but, uh, rehab, uh, overlay or rebuild in, uh, twenty-twenty-three. Some specific streets and then some residential streets as well. We'll get into the residential neighborhoods, which, um, has only been sporadic in the past, but, uh, this year's budget, makes an attempt to get into some of those that are in the worst, uh, shape there. We're still in the process of evaluating the data that we've collected, um, but this is what's on the list for twenty-twenty-three. The next slide shows you the street repair funds by source. And you can see, um, that, what the general fund there and the, um, Highway User Tax Money, um, there. So the total looks like for street repairs in twenty-twenty-three is ten-point-two million dollars. Uh, the total budgeted and in process for twenty-twenty-two is eleven-point-one million dollars. Uh, you'll see there we expended in twenty-twenty-one, five million, in twenty-twenty, uh, four-point-two million. And if you go to, uh, the twenty-twenty-two road projects on the next slide, these are the projects that, uh, we have completed or are in the process of completing with our uh, twenty-twenty-two, eleven-point-one million dollars. Uh, the projects that are completed are on the left-hand side, Grand Avenue, Hudson Avenue, City Center Drive, um, and various ADA curb ramps, uh, uh, around town. And the ones on the right-hand side are the ones that are currently in progress. We hope to have them completed. The Prairie Avenue won't be done this year, but we're working on the concrete work there at this time. We're still securing right-ofways, working with Seadot on that, uh, getting those handicap corners in. But it will be, the street will be repaired and overlaid, uh, next year in all likelihood. Um, these other projects are still on the drawing boards for this year and we hope to get, um, them completed as well. The next slide is the, uh, Police Safety Tax Capital Improvements that we expect to, uh, fund in twenty-twenty-three. Uh, you'll see there that there's a BlackBerry licensing of thirty-nine thousand dollars. A new drone for the Police Department of thirty-five thousand dollars. Laptop replacements for Police Department vehicles, uh, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Uh, vehicle purchases for the police, uh, one-point-three million dollars. And vehicle video system replacements for the Police Department, uh, five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for a total of two-point-seven million out of the Police Safety Tax Capital Improvements, um, and Chief Knoller's on, uh, Zoom tonight. If you have any specific questions about that, that, uh, he can answer for sure. Uh, the next slide is the, um, capital improvements that we're gonna fund with the Conservation Trust Funds. These are grants that, uh, we receive. We're gonna do some athletic field lighting and replacement, uh, City Park Maintenance Campground Restoration, or the, um, Maintenance Compound Restroom at City Park is gonna be restored. Uh, the Tennis Clubhouse and the Bleacher Renovations, uh, out of this fund is gonna be, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. We're gonna take a considerable amount of money, I think, out of the general fund, uh, totaling, I think, uh, for the City Park Tennis Clubhouse and Bleacher Renovation, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, if memory serves me correctly. And then equipment purchases in parks and, uh, outdoor basketball court repairs. We're trying to set up a plan where we can, uh, again systematically go through and repair our outdoor basketball courts. Some of them are pretty old and not, um, up to date, not modern standards. They weren't built like they build them today. So we're talking about replacing some of them, for instance, on the slabs with, uh, post-concrete tensioning, tensioning, like we did with the pickleball courts, so that will last, um, for a long, long time. So Stephen Myers here and he can talk with you about that if you have specific questions about that. Uh, the next item in the capital improvement is the Economic Development Tax. What we're gonna take money out of the half-cent sales tax for, um, replace a chiller at the Pope, Pope Block Building to the tune of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And, uh, we have some city-owned rail lines in the St. Charles Industrial Park down by Vestor or CS Winds now. In that area, we have a rail line down there that the city owns and it needs about a hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs. And those repairs are gonna come out of the half-cent sales tax fund in twenty-twenty-three so that we can make those repairs there. Next slide is the E nine-one-one capital improvements. And these are the projects gonna be funded in twenty-twenty-three. Um, this is a special fund that's paid on your phone bill, I think. Chief Knoller can correct me if I'm wrong, but it goes into a pot and for equipment, software and support, hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, we're gonna spend, and phone system equipment, two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand for a total of four-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. And that concludes, uh, our presentation with respect to the, uh, capital improvements. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have or have any discussion with you about um, other items that you are interested or concerned about.
Thank you, Mayor, for that presentation. What questions are there from council? Counselor Flores?
Uh, uh, Mayor, I just had a couple of questions. One was the amount for Bandera Boulevard. Uh, that amount seems small to me and, uh, it may just be planning money. I, I don't know, but.
The seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand for Bandera Boulevard?
Yeah.
I think that is, and Andrew Hayes is in the room, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that is to complete, uh, just a one-block or two-block section of Bandera Boulevard from Cole Proctor's Development to Thatcher Boulevard. There's two blocks there that are uh, undeveloped at this point. Um, Andrew, is that what that seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is there for, for Bandera Boulevard?
That's correct, Mayor. So there's, there's a stretch between, uh, Omega Homes Development, uh, in Regency, excuse me, I may get the name wrong, Regency Crest, uh, that goes from there north to Thatcher. Uh, if, if that road was open right now, it would go from a hundred-and-four-foot ride right away to a twenty-eight-foot pioneer road back to a divided boulevard again, just before Thatcher. So what we're trying to do is make the, uh, missing section complete there so that the road, road, uh, it's a very short section, but it's, uh, substantial in terms of, uh, construction requirements.
People in Omega will be able to drive out to.
Correct. They'll be able to directly access Thatcher on Bandera. This was a former, a section, uh, road formerly known as Long Road. Uh, some people may, but it's been renamed to Bandera in the last year or so.
Thank you. And then my last question had to do with, I, I noticed there was nothing in here for the renovation of the offices, uh, at the Wells Fargo Building. If we move a lot of our offices into that area, can you update me on that as to where we're headed with the, the, um, the, the Wells Fargo Building?
Yeah, we, um, we haven't put any money in the budget for those renovations at this point. Our anticipation is that we'd fund that by borrowing the money. If we were gonna do that, we've got four million dollars set aside that when we originally were gonna purchase the building, it's, it's in a fund there and it's funded for the purchase of the building, but we're, uh, not making any progress right now, at least with Pueblo County in terms of, um, the mapping of the Wells Fargo Building, which is what has to be completed before we can proceed there. But we've had architects in there and we have a pretty good idea what it's gonna take to, to redo that.
All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments, Counselor Graham?
Um, Mayor, are, is this three-point-six for one pumper and two ladder trucks for existing, um, fire stations? And if so, which ones?
Ooh, it, it is for, uh, existing fire stations, um. And it might, one of them might be for one of the new fire stations. My recollection is that there's a big delay from the time you order one of these until the time you get it in. But if the chief is there, uh, if, if she's present in person, she can answer that better than I. But I think we.
She's coming down.
Okay. We might not, uh, I can't remember now whether it's for a new fire station, but it's, if it is, it's because we have such a large lead time before we can get those fire engines delivered.
So that's correct. Um, one of the trucks is to replace one that's coming due and one is for Station elevens. The lead time's at least fourteen months to get a pumper. Does that answer completely?
Counselor Tensio?
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry. Except for the twenty-two million, Jen, from the general fund, everything else comes from, uh, enterprise, H U F, Police Safety, all those others, right? All those other funds?
Yes, yes.
So those were, these aren't new. These are ongoing funds that we do every year.
Every year they have capital projects that are paid for out of those enterprise funds, yes. Now, the projects change from year to year, but for instance, in wastewater, it's pretty standard to have that large main and that small line, uh, small main replacement program there, right? Yes.
Uh, I have a question on, uh, page nine. The bridge repair on East Eighth, what are we gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on that bridge? Hundred thousand dollars for that bridge is absolutely nothing. It has, it needs to be replaced.
So the bridge across Dry Creek on East Eighth is a, uh, bridge that does not meet current standards for configuration. There's no pedestrian facilities on the bridge particularly. So what this is, is, uh, money to set aside for a grant application for a bridge, um, big, bridge grant. So we are trying to put some money aside for that purpose. Uh, if, if, uh, the money, if a grant is not successful, we can potentially use that fund for design as well. So you've got a more, um, closer to shovel-ready kind of project as well. So there's a couple opportunities to use that to, uh, get some investment there.
Been a problem for a long, 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 long.
It is, it is toward the top of our.
Walking across that bridge with no pedestrian, no sidewalk at all. They walk on a little plank twelve-foot, uh, twelve inches wide across that thing. That thing needs to be replaced quick. And I had something else. Oh, um, whoops. The Police Safety Tax, uh, I, I lost it someplace in here. Uh, how much do we get out of that? Oh, here it is. Five million? Between three and five, proposed five-point, uh, zero-one-six for twenty-three? Four points eight? And we're using two million seven-hundred thousand for, uh, capital improvement? Are we gonna be able to fund the police officers?
I, I think we'll be able to. Chief Knoller's here and he can, uh, answer that as well, but part of this, I think, is a carryover of.
How many?
Sir, uh, over the last several years, we've, we've averaged anywhere from a little over three-point-five million dollars to about four-point-six million, I think, was, uh, last year. Um, the, uh, salary and benefits for the twenty-four, or the twenty officers and the, uh, four sergeants that are covered under the, the Public Safety Sales Tax, uh, costs roughly, uh, two-point-four, two-point-eight million dollars. I don't know what that'll be this year with the seven percent raise, but, uh, that remaining balance would be that two-point-seven million, uh, two-point-eight roughly to, uh, purchase these capital improvement projects.
Well, half of that tax goes to capital improvement things and then the other half for personnel?
Yes, sir. Um, the operating budget, um, for the department is, is two-point-four million dollars, uh, out of, out of the general fund. Um, the, uh, that goes towards a, a number of things that are, are normal operating expenses. Um, the, uh, uh, funds from the P S P sales tax allow us to do these, uh, uh, operational, um, capital improvement projects such as the vehicle replacement program, uh, drone project that allows us to use and, and, and operate drones and the software related to that and the other capital projects that you see there.
How close are we to a full complement of, uh, police officers that we actually should have?
Uh, currently, I think we're at two-hundred-and-six, uh, sworn. That was the latest number that I saw. Um, we're supposed to be at two-twenty or two-thirty-one, uh, when fully staffed.
So that's basically the amount of people that we should have gotten through the same. Basically, the amount of people that we should have gotten through the safety tax?
Roughly, yes, sir. Two hundred and seven without the safety tax would be fully staffed.
Okay. Now we got to do a better job of getting those police officers on the street since we're paying the.
I agree. We need, we need people to apply.
Thank you.
Other questions? Um, so in this capital improvement plan, there's both street repairs and road projects. Can you help me understand what the differences between those two words are?
There ain't any difference and they ought to be on the same line. And we've talked about doing that. Having them all on the same line, but the funding sources are different. You see the road repairs were funded from the H U T F. And the street repairs were funded from the general fund. So that's. Just. Cosmetically, we need to change that. They're the same though.
Okay, okay. And then, you know, when we were originally going through this, for thirty three percent of this improvement plan is going to transportation. I expected a new transit center in there, but there's no new transit center. So help me understand why there's no new transit center in there.
Ooh, because it's probably a fifty two million dollars project. So we're. Avidly applying for grants to help build a new transit center. We. Haven't been successful yet, but you know, with the new federal infrastructure bill, we're hoping that there'll be some money in there. That we can, we can get that done. So and obviously. If I suspect that we'll have a significant. Match that we have to make, even if it's a federal grant, but that's usually how these transit centers are funded is by federal grants. So we simply don't have the money to put it in there at this point.
Is there a match in here, Mayor, for that?
There's not, but we'll be able to find it. Yeah.
Okay. Andrew, for the street revitalization for Union and Main for the four and a half million, does that make us hold in for that total project?
That's correct. That's the city's contribution to the project, two million or so from C dot, two million or so also from the county.
Chief, for the new cars in the P S S T tax allocation, are any of the new cars going to be electric?
Yes, ma'am. Some, some of those, and I don't know if it's going to be this next group of vehicles that are the one point three million. But we are ordering fourteen electric vehicles, I think was the total. Some of those will, some of those will be assigned to investigations or administrative functions, but the majority, I think as many as twelve. Will be assigned to the sergeants and the watch commanders to use in the, in the field.
Awesome. Thanks. And then my last kind of question or comment is in the parks. Pie. There's a lot of funds, there's some funds for light replacements versus new lights in parks. I'm wondering if. There needs to be more allocation to new lights in parks. You're from young people all the time that they want to be out and about at night, so.
That seventy five thousand we kind of allocated for starting Spike and lighting renovations. We had a ball field light go down over in City Park. And so this kind of instigated is to look in it replaces lights with more efficient LED lights. On all those ball fields as well as on the slabs, the basketball courts and where we could do that. And we were talking with the company. And we'll probably be looking at a purchased lease option. So kind of getting a loan out through their programs. And that seventy five thousand dollars would just be a yearly payment that we'd have to budget probably for five to seven years. And then there's a different grant that was being submitted for safer streets to, to do lights in three other parks. And I think the city park looking at doing some street lights around the, through the interior, interior part of the park. And Mitchell Parks, some further lighting along that and over at Ray Aguilera. Too. So we're looking at a grant to help add some lights into those.
Thank you for clarifying that, Stephen. Councilor Mastry? Okay. Sounds good. And then I noticed that there's someone, I don't know if it's Lori. From I T or, or counselor winner online. I don't, I want to make sure that we're offering that opportunity just in case it is counselor winner.
No, this is Lori from I T.
Okay, never mind. Do you have any questions, Lori? Just kidding. All right.
No, I don't.
You know, other questions or comments then for the capital improvement pro that this specific. We're going to move on then to our last proposed budget work session agenda item. So Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. So you all got a copy of the budget. Last week, we wanted to have, we, we sort of outlined for you. What, what we put in the budget, what our recommendations are and things like that. We wanted this to be an opportunity for. For you to talk to us about it, ask any questions you have or seek any clarifications there. Or you have any other introductory remarks that you would like to make?
Thank you, Mayor and Madam Chair. Responding to Counselor Mastry's request from last week. I would like to start with a comparison of the C S A C twenty twenty two funds, the projects and organizations that were funded. And provide you with those that were also on the twenty twenty three budget request for non-departmental. I won't know the content of the request that was funded. Those, the twenty twenty two column was funded early this year. And the organizational amounts that are in the twenty twenty three budget are for next year. But those organizations, as we go down the list, and there are seven of them, is the Besmer Historical Society. The Boys and Girls Club of Pueblo. And you see in, in the left, in the highlighted pale yellow, what C S A C's amount is. And then I added to the very right, the amount that is in our current non-departmental. Continuing down the list, the Nature and Wildlife Discovery Center has three hundred thousand dollars in next year's budget. They did receive twenty one thousand in this current year from C S A C. Going down further, the Pueblo Symphony, there was twenty thousand dollars at the request and direction of council last week was added to the twenty. Budget and they did receive in the current year, seven thousand, three hundred and twenty two dollars of C S A C funding. Further down, the Heritage Museum. Have added for the twenty twenty three budget, twenty thousand dollars. And to the left, you see where they did receive six thousand, one hundred and ninety two dollars of C S A C funding earlier this year. And go to the bottom two. Y W C A, there is fifty five thousand in the twenty twenty three budget and they did receive forty nine thousand, five hundred and ninety six dollars. From the current year of C S A C. And the last one is S R D A that is specifically for the senior recreational support of fifty thousand. And they did receive from C S A C this current year, eighty three thousand, seven hundred and ninety one dollars. And again, we are offset, you know, by years here. That's the closest to comparison to respond to Counselor Mastry's request. The total that is in the twenty twenty three budget from those seven items is five hundred and twelve thousand. And of course, the biggest majority by far is the three hundred thousand dollars that is fully funded from their request. At Mayor's recommendation and city councils to date to the Nature and Wildlife Discovery Center. I think that's the information that you were asking.
Well, what I was asking, I'm sorry. What I was asking is how many outside of the C S A C funds are duplicated? Are they also asking for in the twenty twenty three C S A C funds?
Only these seven.
Seven.
I don't know the exact project request. I would suspect they would be different or carrying over as one year is twenty twenty two and the other twenty twenty three. Brian is here tonight, today as well, Brian Gallagher, who will know more about the twenty twenty three C S A C requests that are still in process from the committee. Of being racked and stacked and sorted and approved for recommendation. But these are all the only seven of the agencies that did receive C S A C funds in twenty twenty two. That are in our twenty twenty three non-departmental requests.
Okay. And then they also have requests through C S A C. Not just our non-departmental requests outside of C S A C. There is a C S A C list they've collect that have put in their applications and some of those are duplicating into C S A C too.
About, I'll, I'll turn it over to Brian. That would be current year requests.
Yes, okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the question that was posed, but I was confirming with Stephen that three hundred thousand dollars for the Nature and Wildlife Center. They appear in the budget in two, two different categories. One is contractual services and one is contribution. The three hundred thousand is a contractual service as they handle the maintenance and repairs for the Beulah Mountain Park area. So that three hundred is, is more of a parks and rec. Line item than a charitable program.
No, that's, I was requesting. We have three hundred, was it four hundred and ninety eight thousand about in C S A C funds available for twenty twenty three?
Four ninety?
Four hundred and ninety. And we've already come up with a list of eight hundred thousand for non-departmental requests. My question is, I know that some of them are also asking for C S A C funds. So I don't think we should be duplicating if C S A C is going to be giving them funding. Why should we be funding them outside of C S A C in addition to?
There are some repetitive. Agencies that have applied for C S A C and both non-departmental.
Okay.
I, it's the, the budget comes before C S A C. C S A C can't proceed until it's determined how much funding they have. So from, from this body, we take that information into C S A C. And under the contract that was originally designed in two thousand and three. The, the mission of, of the Community Service Advisory Commission was to determine need. And so they evaluate what other funds that come from the city or the county. As they go through their list. So it's my position to update them so they know. Who, who got grant in this avenue or that avenue? So they have a running basis of where the need is. They go through and they, they evaluate the agency and they determine whether this is a high need or not a high need. But because the funding doesn't equal the request, they have to make some tougher decisions. And they do weigh in the back of their mind that twenty thousand was given to this agency and thirty was to this agency. So they, they have the information, they evaluate it at that time.
Do they duplicate?
Do they duplicate?
Like, do they also give money? If we've given money outside of it, do they also give money within?
They, they, they can. They do have the information before they make their recommendation to council. But there is time when agency is directly funded and, and both applies to C S A C.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
I just wanted to clarify one thing. If in the departmental budget, we give someone a hundred thousand for. You know, for a nonprofit. They specifically tell us what they're going to use that money for. And they can also go to C S A C. And if they've got, working on a second project. They could receive funds from them, from C S A C if they're vetted properly. So it's, it's duplicate in one way and it's not a duplicate if they're asking for money for a completely different. Project or a different program that they might have. So when we say that they're being, that it's, it's a duplicate ask. I don't think that's the right term. I mean, they're, they're, they're asking for money from two different places for two different things. They may be working on an apple here and an orange here. And a lot of these organizations, since they're nonprofit. Have the ability to come through C S A C, want to, but it's not. It's not as though they're asking for. You know, in my example, a hundred thousand to buy a bus and then they're getting a duplicate. Amount from the city under our non-departmental budget and asking for the same bus. That's duplicate. But I don't think they're doing that. And I, can you clarify that?
When, when I say repetitive or duplicative, I, I mean, the name of the agency appears both in the budget and at C S A C. Some, some nonprofits apply for multiple programs. Boys and Girls Club considers each clubhouse as separate program. And they apply to every, for every. Clubhouse other than the East Side Clubhouse through C S A C. And they typically go to. To C D B G for the East Side Clubhouse. So. S R D A has six different programs that they operate Meals on Wheels or P triple A. So they, they do have. Every agency is a little different, whether they apply for multiple projects. But in the terms of one agency appearing on two lists, that's what I consider duplicate.
Thank you. Well, and I, I think from our perspective, Brian, what we want the message you to take is that we would like C S A C not to. Duplicate funding as Counselor Flores has indicated. We don't want the same project funded twice. For the same amount, you know, by the city and by, by C S A C. So. And obviously C S A C will know, we don't know what they're going to get from C S A C. So it's hard for us to make that determination here, but. By the time C S A C starts considering their requests, they will know what each of these agencies have received from the city of Pueblo. And they're in a position to determine whether it's, they're double dipping, if you will, because they're seeking. Funding for the same project that have already been funded for. We wouldn't want to allow that, but for a different project, I, I think that's okay.
It's my, my role to inform them and I bring in all sources that we have from the ARPA angle, P D G angle. And from, from budget angle. I give them the budget book when they evaluate those agencies.
All right. Thank you.
Like, I guess what I'm saying is that the C S A C and the dark, non-departmental funding, they're one in the same. They come out of the same. C S A C is just regulated and then we give in addition to. People who make the C S A C cut, I think we're breaking our own rules because we set C S A C up. To be a third party agency that regulate, funds it. Audits it, regulates it and so forth. When it comes straight from the city, I don't know how much more it gets, gets done like they do with C S A C. And that's what we set C S A C up for was to distribute non-departmental money. But it seems like we're working outside the box.
The C S A C team works very hard to evaluate and make sure everybody's on page and they, they do a good job. It's a lot of work. We are setting up a gauntlet of meetings next month, which. You don't normally ask a volunteer committee for, but we will be meeting three times a week during the month of November. And.
I think it's doing that what it was meant to do.
Right.
I don't have a problem with C S A C and we give them a budget. But it seems like if they don't work within, you know, with, if not everybody's included, then we also throw other money at it. So. It becomes a choice of, I guess, the mayor, he's the one who made the list. And council, when it should take it out of our hands, and that's why we have a third party agency do it. That's my point. Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Ms. Lano? Madam Chair and City Council and Counselor Mastry, while the, the budget committee, the council's budget committee. And the mayor and I have had conversations about the accountability, transparency and record keeping. And the reporting ask of the agencies that do receive non-departmental requests. Utilizing a recommended similar reporting structure that C S A C uses. And when you do see the new employees that the mayor is recommending, City Council fund. One of them is an internal auditor and a review of those reporting quarterly reports. Definitely would be a collection and then reporting back to City Council. And that's a conversation that both President Graham, Vicente, Council Martinez. Ortega and I and the mayor have had about an opportunity to, to start up now in the twenty twenty three year.
So does that mean we're not going to include C S A C in that anymore? Or we're just going to duplicate it? We're going to have that program and then the other program?
It would, it would simply mean that those that are funded by the direction of City Council have a reporting and transparency aspect to them. That the city does not currently have.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Mayor and Ms. Lano, did that conclude that presentation?
No, one other thing I'd like to add is with respect to the non-departmental contractual payments and the non-departmental contributions and donations. We had a discussion about this, I think on October the eleventh with the City Council. And your bound volume should contain. And your bound volume should contain uh all of the changes recommended by city council at that meeting. Except for Latino Chamber is not in there. And the white M C A for two hundred thousand still remains there, even though there's some question about that, as I understand it. From members of the city council, but I want you to be aware that the other changes that were suggested by the city council. Have been incorporated into the budget as you have before you.
Noted. Other questions or comments? Saying none, does that conclude the, that presentation?
Yes.
Um, okay. Um, so now I will need a motion to go into executive session. Oh. Was that, oh, that's not, I thought that was the budget work session.
Well, staff is prepared uh for, for, to listen to, to city council's direction and request for additional information. We do have a scheduled um budget work session tomorrow and uh staff has tomorrow to, to gather the information requested. Um, if you give, you know, give us the direction this evening, uh, we'll work tomorrow to bring that back to you, other information um by five thirty tomorrow. Um, if you have it available now or can you send it electronically, whatever council would like to do. We will be um prepared to return at five thirty tomorrow uh with uh the information.
For.
For bu- oh, for budget questions. Okay.
Okay. Do, does the council have any questions? Counselor Graham?
So I, this might just be a quick one. Mayor, the excise tax, I saw that it, the proposed is up to five hundred thousand. On page B two, and then if you could tell us a little bit about the internal auditor. Um, the new position, that would be helpful too. It, it could wait first till tomorrow, but just so it's on there.
Okay, um, why don't we do the internal auditor? We'll talk about that tomorrow. B two, the excise tax. That's um.
Just cuz the, the estimate measures significantly lower than the, the previous years and the proposed is significantly higher. I was wondering where that number came from.
Okay, so let me get that answer for you, okay? Why we think that?
Mayor Bradisher, I'm, I'm here on Zoom and I can answer that question tonight. You would like me to?
Sure.
So I, the excise taxes, excise tax for um marijuana cultivation when they, um, you know, cultivate the crops. And I spoke to Val Palumbo, who's a sales tax manager, to see why our revenues were so low this year. She said she reached out to several of the growers and it looks like they've just had a couple of bad grow seasons this year. So the revenue's been much lower cuz they haven't been able to cultivate as many plants. So that's why the estimate is so low, but we did return it up to the five hundred thousand because we did have that. Um, revenue was pretty stable in years past, so we're hoping that in twenty twenty-three, they'll have good crops again and we'll be able to go back to our normal revenue stream.
Thank you, Anna.
And, and, and part of uh what's going on in the marijuana industry is the price of marijuana is dropping dramatically. So that while the excise tax was um pretty significant at one point, um, that, you know, that, um, that five hundred thousand might be a little high. You know, we'll, we'll live with it since we put it in here, but that's what's happening in the industry is the, the tax and that excise tax is based on the average. Sale price, I think, of uh marijuana as determined by the state, either the price they actually pay or an average sales price. So. Um, but the mer- the price of marijuana is dropping. And the other one is the, the uh. Internal auditor, okay? Can we talk about that tomorrow, Counselor?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Martinez Ortega, questions?
No.
Counselor Atencio?
Oh, no, like.
Counselor Mastry?
No.
Counselor Flores?
I do have one. You know, uh, last year uh with the old council. Um, the money for my dashboard, not my dashboard, our dashboard. Uh, was, was actually uh put forth into the budget. But the original agreement was that we would budget that for two years, not one year. But we could only put in for one year. Uh, but I need to revisit that. So that we have the money for the dashboard. That's number one. Number two. There, there is thirty thousand dollars that's still in that fund. That was agreed to by the previous council. It was gonna be used for what's called a workforce development plan. That money has not been used and so I want that to be rolled over into the next budget. So I don't know whether that really uh is a budget item or just a, a technical issue of rolling. Um, you know, the thirty over to another year. Uh, that, that's probably outside the budget thing, but uh, but it has to be done probably under a. Uh, an ordinance or resolution. I don't know in this particular.
Madam Chair and Counselor Flores, um, staff will work with um the accounting office uh tomorrow. Uh, to confirm uh the contract was for two year in one amount. And I believe it was listed as a, a, in the budget and will make certain that the thirty thousand is two there, two, still there and Anna will confirm. That it is um rolled over or if it takes um ordinance action.
We can talk about it tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
That's all I have.
Um, with the upcoming ballot measure of the public sa- sales safety tax, I think it would be helpful for us to hear a little bit about. Um, how, how the P D budget has increased for the four million. And how that differentiates between the actual public safety sales tax dollars, so we can all better understand that as well. And why it's important that two B passes.
Madam Chair, uh, I, let me confirm with um the chief who's online that we can do that tomorrow. Or does that take till next Monday to, to gather that information? He is out of town and that is why he's on Zoom. Chief?
Um, yeah, I, I, I can actually talk about that now if you'd like or, or I can wait until uh, uh, next Monday if that's a, a, okay with council.
Yeah.
I think wait, what I'm hearing, uh, specifically Counselor Atencio says mañana, so. I think that's wait.
Manana or uh Mon- next Monday?
My, next Monday, tomorrow or next Monday, one chief, honestly, but I think that's wait.
Okay, we'll do it next Monday then. If, if we could please do it next Monday, that would, that would be better for me, given what I, what I'm doing here in, in uh on this conference. Good.
Fine. Okay, any other things? Saying none, I will now need a motion to go into executive order.
I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice. On specific legal questions under C R S section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two print. Or print B and the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. To receive legal advice from the city attorney regarding proposed amendments to the Pueblo Municipal Code.
Um, so then now we can just get a, a verbal, oh, a second. I need a second. Counselor Flores, seconds.
And yeah, we'll take, I'll take a roll call vote now.
Okay, um, Counselor Atencio?
Yes.
Counselor Flores, Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Mastry? Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Well, Vicente.
Vicente, Vicente.
Yeah.
Thank you.
With that, I adjourn into executive session.
Yes.